We've resolved our clerical issues and we are ready to begin our Lebanon City Council meeting December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Burke, please tell the role.
Mayor Messer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Here.
Mr. Sellers.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Lamro.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Please join me for the invocation of the budge.
Power heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here safely. Thank you for that town of Lebanon and what it means to each and every one of us, especially during this time of year, Lord, that we stay tuned on the facts and the joy of Christmas and the meaning and then the trickle downs of all the good things that come from that, of being kind to each other and thoughtful and caring and giving, Lord, that we keep our eye out for fellow citizens that might be in need, Lord, that we can bring that to light and find the supplies and resources that are needed. Thank you for having a watchful eye over us. Thank you for loving and caring for us. Thank you for sending your Son to die for us, Lord Jesus, that we born in a stable, died on the cross, and we have access to heaven through that. We appreciate that and love you so much in your precious name. Amen.
Well, the nations of the United States of America, in two hundred and forty, for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice. Charles. Looking at regular items under previous business, we do not have our meeting minutes for this evening, so we will adopt those in January. So, under new business, ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash one hundred.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash one hundred. It's a supplemental appropriation, increasing estimated resources and appropriation transfers and declaring emergency.
This ordinance suggests the final two thousand and twenty-four year appropriations to remain in compliance with the state of Ohio's fund accounting requirements.
Will the motion be adopted? So moved. Second. Any comments? Mr. Burke, please tell the role.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eckers.
Yes.
Mr. Lamro.
Yes.
Mayor Messer. Yes. See, Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my speaking in the city council for two thousand and twenty-four, so just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and looking forward to a great two thousand and five.
So, we're doing stuff.
Carriage parade was great, as always. Scott, do we have any numbers as far as head counts?
We're working through that right now, yeah. So, yeah, it takes a couple days to kind of get to that, so.
Get a count of the hashes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I heard that.
By the end of the week, for sure.
I was at the evening one. I heard that the day one was just as packed, so that's awesome. Also, one mentioned that the Warren County Foundation, they're raising funds to raise the statue of Major General Dr. Joseph Warren, you know, outside of the Harmon Museum, is that correct, Scott?
Correct.
You know, if nobody's familiar with, you know, Dr. Warren, you know, he, obviously, it's what Warren County's named after, and, you know, he's the one that dispatched Paul Revere and William Dawes for the midnight run and an influential leader in the Sons of Liberty and the American Independence Movement. You know, if he didn't die at Bunker Hill, he would be right there with one of the big six as far as, you know, a founding father, so truly great American. More information, I got two websites here, Scott, WarrenCountyMuseum.org and WarrenCountyFoundation.org.
I think so, the museum is spearheading the project, but I think the, for those folks who want to donate to the efforts, that's being handled through the Warren County Foundation.
Okay.
So that's probably why, but the Harmon Museum, Warren County Museum would be the primary point of contact on the project.
Perfect, perfect. American traditionalists, so that's always exciting to see, you know, our roots and stuff like that, so. Last thing I got, it's obviously a little bit of a bittersweet moment as we say goodbye to Councilman Smith over there, his last day on city council, you know. Your integrity and honor has been a guiding light for everybody, I think, here on council, and I aspire to match your character and the character that you've shown in every decision that you've made here on council and as I've got to know you really in every decision that you make in life. It's very inspirational and it is a sad day for city council, but it's a great day for Warren County and a great day for the state of Ohio and because, as I've said several times before, that you're the kind of leader that every office in this country needs to have with your character and integrity and if we're ever going to come back to the virtuous, you know, republican form of government that our founders envisioned this country to have, so, you know, it's been a blessing, you know, and an honor to serve with you for the cause of liberty, you know, for the last two years and I am a hundred percent sure that it's not the last fight that we're going to be doing together, so thank you, my friend, for your service and most importantly, thank you for your example that you've shown all of us and the residents of Lebanon and the state of Ohio, so we'll all be cheering you on, sir.
Thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
That's all I got.
It's been great working with you. Mr. Smith, wish you the best of luck. You're welcome to come back and visit. Hang out with us, lowly city council members. No, it's been great and I appreciate your insight. Just, it's been a fun couple of years. The Christmas parade was awesome. I don't know how many people were there, but it seemed like it was larger than ever. Just great to see people from all walks of life. It's great to see the kids, everybody smiling. Kudos to the Chamber and staff for setting things up and Adam Bray, I ran into Adam Bray, I haven't seen him, I didn't know he was taking the role that he has, but from the World Equestrian Center to come out and kind of keep everything in order and then to make sure everybody's lined up in the right spot and that's a thankless job, so. It was a lot of fun, the weather was awesome and it was, that's the first time I've ever gone at night. We've always gone during the day. Even got to see Mr. Norris there and I appreciate you.
In my booth.
Sure, I went with tomatoes and everything.
They were frozen.
Other than that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Enjoy a time with your family and friends.
I've got a packet from the Warren County Foundation to raise money for the Brighton-Smith statue that. I use humor when I'm sad. I have considered Brighton brother and a deep friend, he's in my bad category. I've been able to spend time with him outside of here and I enjoyed that. Absolute man of character. I'm going to miss you here, but I know we're still be friends, so that's a good thing. You're not leaving, you're just going somewhere else. Very proud of you for jumping in, relatively new citizen into the area and jumping in and being willing to serve in different capacities, all the way up to an elected official in our community now, so you'll be missed, your lawyerish wisdom will be missed, the lean heavier on mark now. And I appreciate, I definitely appreciate our friendship and you being willing to serve Lebanon very much. I just have to say that the Christmas parade was fantastic as well. I kept telling Terry until she told me to quit saying it, I go, I'm walking around with fifty thousand people and I know no one and it was amazing how many, I mean, we can kind of get a head count with our technology, but the interesting thing would be how many of those aren't from Lebanon? How many people, and it's a lot, I think, about. Yeah, because I was really trying to pick people out and, you know, seeing and lots of smiles and just Lebanon just shows itself so well and I kept hearing Hallmark, Hallmark, Hallmark and I go, but this is how Lebanon is most of the time and it is a cheery, fun city and people like to be here and it definitely showed, so. Very proud of the Chamber and Janice and taking her first stentist did a great job. The city, everything just ran so smooth and the staff and all that work and part of that. All the volunteers, I'm sure, right, you could attest that it probably could have used more, but you guys managed to pull it off. Even the complaints, nothing new, same thing, you know, parking, whatever, it's just, it is what it is, it's a parade, it's tough. I've been to the Rose Parade multiple times and trust me, it's nothing like that, it's well-run here, we do a good job and we have a, for how do we exit that many people in that short a time out of now, because an hour later they're coming? It's amazing. They're all going right by my house, I know. It's an hour, but even now, looking at the lights and looking at stuff that's going on around town, there's still a lot more to do and we started our holiday at the Ark on Thursday, we went and saw a Christian group that we love, the Geddies, and which is Celtic music, which is my favorite, and then we went to the Waynesville Walk, which we always do on Friday, and then we did All Day in Lebanon. I did both parades, which I'd never done, the day and the night, which was really fun. So it's just been a huge Christmas blessing week and church on Sunday, friends came visit and just moving on, so it's a great place to live and just really do appreciate all the efforts that people put in to make that happen, so my family and I can enjoy and other people as well.
I too want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we approach this, really, for many of us, the faith blessed time, that really reflects on what life's about, gives us a chance to pause and as we get to do that now. I do want to give on the business side some kudos to the city staff during the power outage and I know, appreciate the quick, detailed response from Sean and helping me to just kind of understand and city council understand and what it takes and for folks to sweat through it, I mean, city staff are up all night long, middle of the night, dealing with, dealing with what they have to deal with and as they try to maintain services for the city, so. Great kudos to the electric department and what they did, kudos to, I mean, I tried to think as many as I could voice during the parade for just thanking the staff that were out there and the volunteers and it is such a big effort and man, we do it well, like the way people exit, I mean, we really do it well. Ancillary, I had several meetings today with folks from around Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky area and two people, one from Cincinnati, one from Northern Kentucky, came up to the parade, so, and with family members and stuff and so, and joking around about, you know, buying gifts and visiting the vendors and they had a great experience, so this is a great regional event. We need to make sure that we, I know we had less carriages this year, so we, city council, we need to take it upon ourselves and make sure we figure out how to support this event in any way possible, because it is a legacy event for the city of Lebanon. And on the, you know, personal note, appreciate your friendship as I kind of got to walk the whole political growth of, you know, from what you do, of what I've been doing and learning and just trying to understand and now you've moved on to county level, so congratulations on that, I know we already did that and you and Steph are friends and I'm excited just to, you know, as you get to move on and experience this at a different level, so that's cool. It's a job now, right? You know, it's a little different at councils, it's a job, but it's, now it's a job, but you get your experience, it's like a perfect fit for you, so it's exciting and congratulations and you'll be missed here and but we'll have to figure out when we get the right person here for your seat, so congratulations and that's all.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, the parade was great. I had the pleasure of riding along with some fellow council members and a few of my family members and my youngest is six and so it was hand wave and the hand wave, she said, my arms are getting tired, you should have switched back and forth and, you know, just smiling and how fun that is to just see so many people happy, I mean, there's always opportunities for people to tell us negative things and to be unhappy about things, but to see thousands and thousands of happy people, it's just, there's just something so special about them and they're all having a wonderful time and they all want to be here in this place that we all represent and that we help support and create and do all these things and, you know, just when you are going along the parade route and you see all the happy people and then you see a staff member, you see a person from the chamber, these people who are placed strategically around the city, doing their jobs, making this happen so that we can just ride along and smile and have fun, you know, it's really nice. I hope I was the only one to yell at Janice because I yelled happily, you know, hey, good job, you know, because I saw her in the crowd and it was just, it was neat because all the time I know that she and the Chamber employees and volunteers have put in to that day and for her to just be standing there, getting to watch, you know, everything take place was really neat, so, and there were, I saw lots of people visiting the vendors and just everything was, of course, clean and organized and just really nice, it was a really great event and, excuse me, my kids look forward to it every year and have looked forward to it since I was a kid, so that's another nice experience that I get to participate with them. And of course, on the Brighton note, excuse, Mr. Smith, but he's my friend, so I, all right. Not only has it been a pleasure to serve with you, but you're my friend and I've learned a lot from you and I appreciate all the insight that you have given me over the years and having another individual who is so well-versed in just sensible politics and governing and so many different areas, that it's been so nice to have somebody who I can count on to ask questions and to learn and grow from and then when we had the opportunity to put you right here, I mean, there was no other choice that would be better than you and I'm so proud of you for standing strong in a lot of situations where a lot of people would crumble, you didn't and you've held your head high and you've been honorable through all of it and, good to get a motion, because you're my friend and Steph is my friend and, you know, a lot of people don't understand all that it takes to sit up here and to serve in some of the other roles that you have and all the things that it takes just to continue to be a voice for the citizens who voted for you and who respect you and I appreciate that a lot and I know they do too and even more people voted for you this time and you're going to go and make them proud and you're going to make us proud and I'm just looking forward to seeing what's out there for you next and continuing to learn and grow alongside of you.
Thank you. Well, I have absolutely nothing to say, I'm just going to, no.
Just ditto it all.
Yeah, okay, ditto it. Well, no, first, I want to say the carriage parade is another amazing showing for our city and the Chamber and the city, the way that they work together is absolutely amazing and astounding to watch. I want to single out, she's been mentioned already, but Janice, the Chamber Director, you know, she is new in her position and she came on board and tackled this event just head-on in an amazing way and produced absolutely astounding results. I really want to tip my hat off to Janice and then also, as has been mentioned, to the city staff, because I was down there in the morning helping to set up and you had, I mean, by the time I got there, oh gosh, it was early in the morning, the sun was still coming up, the city had already parked their trucks there to kind of block off the road so that all of the booths and everything could get set up. Absolutely amazing and then afterwards, going back to how quickly everything gets cleaned up and it's as if, I mean, half an hour later, you would never even have known that a parade happened, I mean, as soon as like the last carriage goes down the street, they got the street sweeper there cleaning up, you know, the fun stuff that gets left behind by horses in the road and it's just absolutely amazing and I love this event for our city. Steph and I went to both the day and the evening parade, which has kind of become a bit of like a tradition for us and it's really fun. I implore everybody next year to try and go to both if you can, because the experience is really, really different for each of them, it's really, really nice. So with that, I just want to say again, thank you to the Chamber and the city for putting this on every year, working so closely together to make it a success. And then comes to the really bittersweet part, which is, with this being my last meeting here with all of you, I just want to emphasize first how special Lebanon is. This city is a leader in our county, our state, and our country. We are, I would say, if not the most conservative, one of the most conservative cities in America and on top of that, we're also very outspoken about it, which I think is something also special in and of itself, because it's very easy to have principles that you believe in, it's a whole nother thing to actually stand up for them, especially in the face of conflict and opposition and this city and this city council has done that multiple times on very large issues, the issue of life, the issue of the Second Amendment, energy. You know, we've tackled some really, really big issues as a community and we're all the better for it and that is something that I don't take for granted and as I move on to the clerk of courts position, you know, it's been kind of mentioned, you know, I'm moving on or moving up. Yes, as far as constituency, but I firmly believe that the role of city council member in the state of Ohio is one of the most important roles in government, because we're a bottom-up government and the decisions that are made in this room, within this body, every single day are the decisions that most impact the lives of the residents in this community, more so than any other body or any other position. I believe, I would say, that probably county sheriff rivals city council or trustee, if you're talking about a township, as far as importance, but I definitely, as appreciative as I am for this opportunity to be clerk of courts for the county of Warren, it's not a step up, it is just another opportunity and another way to serve, because what you guys do here, it really matters and please do not forget that. I also, I want to make sure that I thank the voters. I was appointed to this position initially and then ran to hold the seat and the voters did not have to put me back in the seat. I went to them humbly, asked them for the opportunity to continue and they said yes and I will be forever appreciative of that. I knocked on the doors and I talked to people, they expressed, you know, their thoughts and their concerns, we went to them with some very challenging questions, funding for our fire department, something that was approached in a very novel way, but our citizens stepped up and said, yes, this issue of public safety is important enough that we want to invest in it and we as city council members, we were out there, obviously with the help of others and we helped make that case and the voters heard us, the voters agreed with us, the voters supported us and again, that means a lot, so I want to thank the voters of Lebanon also for the opportunity that I've been given. And then I cannot neglect what to thank my fellow council members, because as I said, I was first appointed to this seat. You guys put trust in me, you guys put your reputations and your names on the line in appointing me and I hope that through all of my actions that I've proved that you guys were wise in the decision that you made and I hope I made you guys proud. We haven't always all agreed on everything, which is good, but there's something special about this group that unfortunately doesn't exist as much as it should in politics, which is we can disagree without being disagreeable. The civility, the decorum, the appreciation for opposing viewpoints that we express as council members that I've experienced with all of you in the course of our debates and discussions, it's amazing and I wish that we saw more of that and even within people that are on the same side of the aisle as all of us are, but I think we have set a very, very good example and I implore you guys as someone who continues and will continue to be a resident of this city, keep that going. It's really good for this city and for the residents. Like I said, disagreements will happen, you guys should disagree, debate is important, iron sharpens iron, but maintaining that civility and respect for each other is really good, so please continue that. And then lastly, but definitely not least, I actually, more than definitely not least, but more importantly, I have to thank my wife, Stephanie. I could not have done any of this without you. Only you know the full breadth of what this has really meant to me, to our family and everything that's gone on and that we've been through. You don't cry. But I truly, I can't put into words how much you mean to me and it even kind of ties into the friendship and relationship that I have with all of you. This might make me emotional. I haven't shared this before, but this past September, Steph and I experienced a tragedy. We experienced a miscarriage and it was tough, it was really tough. The love and understanding that you guys all gave to us meant a lot, more so than even just the calls and messages of condolences, just even the way that you guys greeted me and talked to me in those meetings after it happened, I could feel the caring and my wife and I, we love you all and we really appreciate it. She's my heart and I think you guys all recognize that and it came through in everybody's behavior. So thank you, thank you for loving my wife and loving me. And this Liberty Coin that was given to me by Councilman Sellers on my first day here, I have brought with me to every single council meeting, even though there have been times when I thought I lost it because I would leave it in my pants and I'm like, oh my gosh, you already got it, I'm like, I can't lose this, the original one, I could ask them for another, but it'll never be the same, you know. Thank God, every time I ended up finding it, sometimes it was in the wash, sometimes it was on the floor, whatever, but I ended up finding it every time and I've had this in my pocket every single council meeting. He gave this to me because he said he wanted for me to remember that in this role, I should be a walking, talking representation of liberty and I'm going to take this with me to my new role as clerk of courts and keep it going, continue the tradition. Thank you, guys. I love Lebanon, God bless Lebanon, God bless all of you, God bless the United States of America and with that, for the last time, I'll turn it over.
For real quick, Mr. Smith, it's been an honor to serve with you. Um, your absence, I think, is going to leave a void in the men's handsomeness and style. Areas. I don't, I don't see how we're gonna recover. I think that is what we want. It's gonna be continuing, definitely. It has been an honor to serve with you. Um, Mr. Burke, um, we do have a copy, received a copy of Mr. Smith's resignation letter, effective January 3rd. So, third within, according to the charter, within 30 days of January 3rd, the effective date, council will have to appoint a replacement. A copy of this resignation letter should go, um, both in Mr. Smith's personal file and it should also be attached to the papers. Again, thanks for being a good supporter. I like to tease them.
No, thank you. Thank you. With you as well. I appreciate you.
Well, Mr. Smith, I, uh, I appreciate, uh, your service to our city. I appreciate your, uh, your candor and your thoughts as we move through very difficult, uh, decisions at city level. You mentioned it, I was going to mention it also, is that this group is special. Um, it's the most conservative group, I think, I've ever served with, yet we got a tax increase passed.
Sorry, man.
That's a special group. So, that means one thing. That means that our citizens, uh, trust our judgment and you are a, a part of that, um, part of that group. And I just, uh, I appreciate your, your service and congratulations on your advancement, uh, to Clerk of Courts. I know you'll, you'll do a great job. Uh, as far as the city or the, uh, the horse parade, I think everybody understands that, uh, we, this is a showcase for Lebanon. Uh, Mr. Coe mentioned that there wasn't as many carriages this year. Um, I think we're, we will be taking a look at where the city can come through even more than we have in the past to make sure that this stays a, a hallmark for our city, um, something that future generations will, will enjoy. Um, it takes a lot of money to bring in those, those big rigs and all those horses. And it's, uh, to this point, it's unfortunate, but, uh, a lot of those older teams are, are dying off just because they don't have the drivers that they used to. So, we'll have to pull from various demographics and maybe even other states and, um, I think it's going to take some, some money. And my thought is working with, uh, corporate sponsors as well as the Chamber, uh, and then us playing a larger role in the future, uh, to make sure that it's a, is something great for the citizens and also the region. Um, I also wanted to mention, I mean, I, it was all up in the news, uh, but it was last Monday, we had, Ohio had its first child surrendered.
Oh, gosh.
Uh, to the, our baby box, our baby box. Um, Lebanon installed ours just less than a year ago. Uh, the day that we dedicated our box, there was a, there was a surrender down in Kentucky, North Kentucky. And then, um, we just had one last Monday. I talked to the, uh, the attending doctor down at Children's and she is in good health and, um, doing fantastic. They, they were able to transfer her to Children's and, um, she's doing very well. Um, Bonnie and Tom Ayers is a, uh, the legacy that, that they will leave is, is going to be walking around every single day of that little world. And so, I just want to thank them again for their, uh, their generous donation and the, the amount of money and effort they put into getting that box done. And then also the city staff and then at the statehouse level, having to go through all those legal issues to get that thing open. Um, I'm just glad that everybody stuck with it. And, uh, that was a big deal for Ohio, a big deal for Lebanon that day. So, I can't think of any other way to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, but to end with that. But we do have an executive session.
So, a motion to adjourn to new executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 12122 G2, considering the purchase of property for public purposes. If premature disclosure of information within unfair complaint, if the party may manage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Somebody?
Say.
Mr. Burke?
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Place Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lamaram?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
I would like to say that much to Mr. Coe's chagrin, I finally got to say something that no one else did.
That was important.
Yeah. Merry Christmas. See you next year.